Hello, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 9th, 2021, Corret County Board of Education meeting. It's a beautiful day, and I'm happy to see everybody out in the audience, and I'm excited for this meeting. And we're going to start off with Ms. Brittany Wheatley giving us the pledge and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for your guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you will clearly show us how to conduct your work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. May your goodness and love be present amongst us and guide our thoughts. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Good job, Brittany.
Thank you, Dennis.
All right, moving ahead, we will move to item 2.1 and consider approval of a meeting agenda. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to amend Section 4.4 of the consent agenda to approve the WAN service contract proposal. Our recommendation to Conterra Ultra Broadband LLC subject to such modifications as the superintendent determines are in the best interest of the school system, as long as such modifications do not affect price or service.
Mr. Day has made a motion to amend 4.4. All in favor, say aye. What do we? I need to get a second, right? Are we taking it off? Are we approving it?
No, this is amending it. Neil, can you provide a little bit more info?
It is approving it, but subject to any amendments that superintendent believes are in the best interest of the school system.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
All right. We'll have a second on that. Second. Mr. McClain has a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Now I need to approve the consent agenda?
I'll be...
Very good.
Yes, you do. Amendment.
All right. Now I need to consider approval of the amended meeting agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Perfect. Mr. Day has made the motion, and Mr. McClain has a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We have approved the consents agenda. Now we will move to public forum, and I've got this little thing I'm going to read real quick. It is now time for public comment. Anyone present tonight wishing to make comments should have filled out a form, and as long as COVID social distancing restrictions are in place, we are also accepting written comments that will be at least partially read to the board and the full text presented to the board if within the bounds of public comment. To ensure severity, relevance, and time management, there are specific requirements for public comments set forth in school board policy. They include: Comments are limited to matters pertaining to public education. The speaker shall state his or her name at the beginning of his or her comment. For mailing comments, the administrator reading the comment will identify the author. Speaking time will be limited to three minutes per person, including the reading of a mailing comment. Assistant Superintendent Richie Paylor is our timekeeper. He will hold up a yellow cord when the speaker has 30 seconds left and a red cord when the time has ended. Our only public speaker on record tonight is Ms. Deanna Hayden.
Hello, my name is Deanna Hayden. I'm here for two things. One, I would like you guys to consider approving prom for the juniors and seniors in the county. Those that are seniors missed out on their junior prom, this is their last chance they can do it. So I'm requesting that you guys allow these high schools to let the kids have their senior prom. They've lost, they missed so much, so they need that. So that's the first thing I want to say. Second thing I want to say is, I think, I feel that we were misrepresented by Dr. Jackson on the PAC meeting to you guys, and that the key factor that we were trying to get across was is that dual enrollment, all of our kids there would not have qualified for dual enrollment. With that said, I feel that you guys needed to know that. I know that y'all made your decision, but kids are going to lost. To Bubba and Katie, I want to thank you guys for at least having the balls and the decency to talk to our parents and tell them, you know, you're sorry for what happened. I know it's a tough decision, board. All we asked y'all to do was to listen to us, okay? And y'all were cowards not to come out and talk to them. And I enjoyed living rent-free in your head. And with that said, if we had the prom, this is my official invite to you, Mr. Day, to come to mass prom with us. That's all I have to say.
Is that a date?
Oh, that is a date. On my prom ordeal, though, these kids are playing basketball, they're playing football, and they're wrestling. The kids that are going to slow dance together are already making out before they even get into the gym. I said it. Okay? So let's give them this prom. Let's let these kids have fun. And Travis, I am not making out with you.
Thank you for the invite. I'll talk to my wife.
My husband approved.
Very good. Thank you. Next on the agenda is to consider policy revisions for second read. And now, Mr. Blair, perhaps?
Good evening, Board. These policies for second read come from the School Board Association's Fall 2020 Update Packet. They reflect minor edits to the text or technical changes such as legal references, cross-references, or footnotes. There is nothing substantial to report about these policies. No changes were made since the first read. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Preps? All right, do I have a motion for considering the policy revision for second read?
移到
Second. I've got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. On to receive policy revision for first read.
First read, these policies again come from the Fall 2020 Update Packet. Policy revisions reflect changes in federal and state laws, as well as mandates from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. These set of policies don't have really substantial changes to report to. However, anytime there is a change that is related to the board, I like to bring it to your attention, particularly Policies 2120, Code of Ethics for School Board Members, and Policy 2121, Board Member Conflict of Interest. These I bring to your attention because they are applicable to the board. It just basically says there's a new subsection that a board member will not influence any personnel matter pertaining to the board member's spouses, employment with the school system. I don't think we have that issue, but I do want to bring that to your attention. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Blair.
All right. Thank you, Blair.
Thank you.
Now we will move on to...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The consent agenda, I think we need to address the consent agenda.
Okay. I need to have it approved?
Yes, sir. I think we revised the agenda and approved the meeting agenda. We need to approve the consent agenda, please.
I appreciate you keeping me on track.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Now do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
移到
Do I have a second?
Second.
Very good. We have a first and a second. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. Consent agenda is approved. Thank you, Dr. Jackson. I'd get lost if I didn't have you around. Now we are moving on to Ms. Coreswell. Consider Budget Revision Number 7 for 2020-2021.
The state budget revision is very minimal to date. The first item is appropriate funds received from the state for substitute reimbursement and interest earned in an amount of $4,154. The second item is to appropriate funds received for cost of materials for check and connect and resilience and learning training in the amount of $9,500. That is the state amendment. The federal amendment, the first item, is to increase funds for the IDEA preschool due to the initial allotment being greater than the planning allotment in the amount of $701. The next three will be a decrease in our revenue. The first one is a decrease in Title I funds due to the initial allotment being less than the planning allotment, an amount of $880. The next one is decreasing IDEA Part B EC funds. Again, the initial allotment was less than the planning allotment. This one's a little more significant, a $33,705. The next one is a decrease to our teacher quality funds, again, due to the initial allotment being less than the planning allotment in the amount of $4,676. The next one is risk hole funds that we receive for EC grants in the amount of $252,234. And the next is appropriate targeted assistance funds that we received in an amount of $14,58227. That's the capital, I mean, that's the federal budget amendment. The capital budget amendment, the first item, is appropriate funds received from the county. This is actually bond money they're appropriating for chair replacement in an amount of $7,0658. And then the special revenue fund, it's appropriate additional funds received for NC pre-K in an amount of $30,885. That is the total amount of budget revision number seven. Any questions?
If I have any questions? Perfect. Thank you so much, Ms. Coreswell. That was excellent, as always.
You're so welcome. Anytime.
Well, I'm going to need a motion to consider Budget Revision Number 7 for 2020-2021.
Mr. Chair, I need to approve the Budget Revision Number 7 as presented.
Ms. Wheatley has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McClain has a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We move on to receive bond projects update. That'll be Mr. Richie Paylor.
Last time we talked about the bond projects, I told you that the RFQs, we put out an RFQ for architectural firms, and those were due on February 19th. It ended up that eight firms submitted their qualifications, and so our review committee looked through those eight firms, and we have narrowed it down to three firms. And so those firms will present to the board on March the 16th. At that time, it will be your job to select an architectural firm to move assort with their bond projects. Also with the bond, we are moving forward with the making the DRS compliant, ADA compliant at Atlantic Elementary School, Hogg's Elementary School, and West Corret High School. So those, that's in the, we're well on the way in the planning stages there, and that those projects should start soon. We'll coordinate with principals when that work begins to make sure that instruction is not interrupted. And lastly, we're in the beginning stages of planning for some of the covert walkways to get started. Any questions?
All right. Everybody good? Thank you, Richie.
Thank you.
Next, we will receive comments from Dr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, board members. As I shared with you on Friday morning, I very much appreciate the time and energy the board has put into this work, especially in the last week. Last week, some of you were involved in various community board meetings on four consecutive days, and we're back again here this evening. And so thank you for the time and energy and effort that you invest in our school system. Welcome to the month of March. March has already been a busy month, and we're only nine days into the month. During the month of March, we have the opportunity to celebrate great things happening in our school system. This week, we celebrate National School Breakfast Week and National School Social Worker Week, and certainly we appreciate our child nutritionists and all of our social workers. With March also being music in our school month, I had the opportunity to meet with our high school band directors via Zoom yesterday to hear their plans for the rest of the year and going into next year. I'm very proud of all of our music programs throughout the school system, and extremely proud that our team has been able to continue to ensure that music remains a part of our students' education. I was extremely honored today to join Chairman Jenkins and Mrs. Chadwick, along with Corretan High School parent Christine Hanks and East Carteret High School senior William Chadwick, in representing our incredible school system by traveling to the state Capitol to address the North Carolina House K-12 Education Committee. Chairman Jenkins and Mrs. Hanks did an amazing job speaking to the committee, which was not easy when you're only given 90 seconds with which to speak. But East Carteret High School senior William Chadwick absolutely did a wonderful job in representing our school system. The chair of the committee made a special point to compliment him on how eloquent he was in his remarks, and I very much appreciate each of them. I'd like to especially highlight Representative Pat McElrath, who introduced House Bill 90, a local bill allowing school districts to have the option to open middle schools and high schools. We heard from other representatives today who were highly complimentary of the We heard from other representatives today who were highly complimentary of her and her foresight. She is truly advocated for the children and families of Carteret County. I'm excited to say the bill received approval of the House Education Committee. It's now been re-refered to the House Rules Committee to continue the journey towards full approval. Last month, I had the opportunity to shadow and assist Ms. Melanie Rose, the cafeteria manager at Atlantic Elementary School. I was blown away by her hard work and willingness to do whatever it takes to serve our students and staff. Later this week, I'll have the opportunity to shadow and assist another of our incredible teammates as I spend a day in the life of a fuel truck mechanic with one of our incredible bus mechanics, and I'm looking forward to that day, though I may need to take a day off the day after. I'm extremely excited that this Friday, on the Teacher Work Day, the Carteret County Health Department will offer a vaccination clinic for any Carteret County public school staff that wish to be vaccinated. I'm very appreciative of the partnership we have with the county and with the Health Department and their efforts to make this happen for our teachers and staff, and would like to highlight Assistant Superintendent Blair Probst, who's worked so hard with our Health Department to bring this to fruition, and in addition to all that he's also doing with regards to the pandemic and in his day job as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Probst. Spring break is less than a month away. As we have throughout this pandemic, we're committed to meeting the nutritional needs of our students. We're excited to offer families food service over the spring break. A phone message went out to all families today to detail this opportunity. Five breakfasts and five lunch will be prepared for each student that pre-orders. Buses will deliver the meals in neighborhoods on Friday, April 2nd. Families will make arrangements to pick up the meals at the bus stop. Finally, board members, I remain and am incredibly appreciative of the work of our teachers, administrators, and staff who are continuing to give their all amidst unprecedented challenges on behalf of our children. They are absolutely amazing. I can assure you that we have been, we are, and we will remain Carteret strong. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Now we will receive any comments from any board members?
None. I would like to welcome Ms. McLennie to the general office, and I'm not going to cry, and you're not going to cry. But after 20 years, you really don't find many educators with the enthusiasm and passion she still has. If you haven't been at Newport L. in the morning every day, she tells those kids, "If no one told you they love you today, I love you very much, and I want you to be the best you can be." And she really means it. I'm sad to lose you as my kiddos principal, but I'm really thankful that all 8,000 of our kids now get to have you in their life.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Anybody else? Just one I ask, but maybe clarification. The speaker asked us about the prom. I'm just asking. I'm asking. I don't know. We just had a prom.
I'm hoping that's a high school decision. That's not a board...
Is that a board decision against my question?
It could be, but I think it's administratively taken care of, and I can tell you that I've actually had conversations with all three traditional high school principals, and we'll reach out and have a conversation with Mr. Johnson as well, and plans are underway for proms at all of our high schools.
Good, good. I just didn't want to pass over and look like we didn't even hear.
I'm fighting for a prom. That.
And graduations.
And graduations, yes. But, you know.
Okay.
That's all.
We might have to be lawbreakers, I guess.
And Blair, I do want to thank you for helping coordinate the vaccinations. I think that that is monumental towards getting our kids back in school full-time, and it makes people feel much safer to be in the classrooms with all those kids. I appreciate it.
Anybody else?
Okay, very briefly, I want to give a shout out to Pat McElrath. I often email various members of the General Assembly, and often they email me back, you know, maybe they get tired of hearing from me, but this time, Pat invited us to come up there and see how it works and to speak, and, you know, we've been talking back and forth, many of us, with Pat over the past couple of months, and I thought it was just brick luck out there. I thought it was just people over him, but I feel like we made a difference today. I've never experienced that, and I was, I was tickled. I was tickled that we had the ability to be recognized as people who wanted our kids back in school, and that they listened to us, and Pat McElrath made that happen. So I've got to give some major kudos to her. That was, I was really impressed with the way today went, and it meant a lot to me and it meant a lot to our school system, so just a shout out to her, so anyway. It's going to be glorious the rest of this week, I think in the 70s by Thursday, so I want y'all to go outside, enjoy the sunshine, live life, and if there's nothing else, I made a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Remove. Motion to adjourn, any second?
Second.
Brittany, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. This meeting is adjourned.